Hi, I'm Jeff Cannon, President, Citizens Bank of Lawrence County. When we began looking for a location for our second Dublin banking office, the historic Henry Building looked like the perfect spot. Because Dublin and Lawrence County is our focus, and making banking easier and more convenient for our customers is our goal. Citizens Bank of Lawrence County, member FDIC and an equal housing lender.
A local full-service community bank, offering quality banking services. Citizens Bank of Lawrence County, now open in downtown Dublin.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Dublin City Council meeting. Our council's here, we're going to certainly say the pledge and prayer in a minute, but then we'll do a little explanation. Our report from Dr. Kraft yesterday had us showing 30 to 50 positive cases a day over the last few weeks, several days. And yesterday, we had a total of 61 cases. So before we even get started, and before we, we just want to please encourage everyone to maintain social distance, wear your mask when you need to, and keep your hands washed. We don't, we don't need to lose any more good services of Dublin or our district. So with that being said, I'm going to ask that if Councilman Chris Smith would give us our indication, we'll then say the pledge to the flag.
All right, everybody here, please. A little bit, thank you for waking us up this morning. Thank you a lot on a civil day. As we saw this meeting go off, we actually just help us make the best decisions on that for the city. And we also actually just keep everyone safe. You know, there's a lot going on in the world. We actually just continue to keep us healthy and well. It's now the Christmas season, and let everyone remember what the season is for. It's for you. So Jesus name, pray. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our first, we've got actually three special presentations that the council, you will make. There are four employees here, and both the Courier Herald and TB35 are here, with us in the chambers. The first presentation is a proclamation for Dublin City School System and Dr. Fred Williams. And I've asked Lance if he would read that for us, and then we'll make it official. Thank you.
All right, this is a Dublin, New York, Dublin City Charter School, December 17th, 2020. By the City of Dublin Council, by the Dublin City Council, Mayor Phil Best, proclamation. Whereas all children in Dublin should have access to the highest quality education possible. Whereas Dublin recognizes the important role of effective education play in preparing all students in Dublin to be successful adults. Whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Dublin. Whereas Dublin is home to the high-quality, world-class Dublin City Charter School System, which provides total school choice and program choice for two famed elementary schools, Hillborough, which is leadership-driven and public service. Elementary, Susie Dasher Elementary, which is science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, or STEAM. And also the higher educated academy, which is kindergarten through eighth grade. Tell the middle school, Moore Street School, Dublin High School, and the Art of Georgia College and Career Academy. In addition to families that can educate their children in the home, with virtual choice. And whereas Dublin City Schools has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school setting, who are committed to educating higher children through different educational learning environments, such as in the, such as the in-person learning environment, hybrid learning environment, virtual teacher-directed environment, and virtual self-place environment. And whereas Dublin City Schools was the charter system of the year for the state of Georgia in 2019, and is the only school system between Mayfair and St. Louis, designated as IP World School, offering the international, baccalaureate program of study, as well as advanced placement courses in all day initiative courses. And whereas the Dublin City School System is committed to maximum use of flexibility, local school governance, things, workforce development, and innovative practices, to ensure high achievement and success for all students. Positive stakeholder engagement in support of parents and Dublin Lawrence community. Now therefore, Mayor Phil Best is hereby recognized as Dublin City School as a world-class charter school system, producing globally competitive students, and is hereby proclaiming December 17th, 2020, as Dublin City Schools Charter System Deputy in the city of Dublin, and urges all citizens to join him in congratulating the Dublin City Schools for their education, students, staff, parents, and local school governance things in this historic house home, and encouraging more citizens to become involved in the Dublin City Schools.
Thank you Lance, and congratulations, Dr. Williams. I tell you, not only are you a world-class charter system, you've done a world-class job, you and your staff have over the last few years of getting the school system going and doing good. And we just appreciate you so much, and are glad you are a strategic partner of the city of Dublin. And we just want to congratulate you, and thank you for the job well done. And you're welcome to make some remarks if you'd like to.
Yes, sir. Just want to thank you and the council for your continued support of the students and the young people that are now and are future. You know, we're just excited about the going on, and look forward to the continued partnership. Thanks for that.
Our next order of business is to award, two awards to the presentation for the employee of the quarter and the quarter of the year. What I'm going to do is I'm going to mute and go down, and Lance is going to tell you a little bit about these employees. And I'll be back in just a second.
All right, first, our employee of the fourth quarter, City of Dublin is pleased to announce Easton Powell is employee of the fourth quarter, 2020, for the city of Dublin. Easton?
Operator qualified service tech two, has acquired his Class A CBL from the gas department. Getting qualified takes a lot of work, and it is unbelievable. Not only is he the life of the party, he makes it the point to be the hardest worker in the room. His mind is like a sponge for the knowledge of gas trading, and his work ethic is unmatched. No job is too big or too small, installing a gas tank, hooking grandma's cats, maybe he wants to tell us about that. Easton is always at work, always on time, and rarely requests time off. His future is bright when it's City of Dublin Gas Department and the city of Dublin. These are just a few of the reasons that Easton Powell was nominated by his coworkers for employee of the quarter. Congratulations again for being employee of the fourth quarter, 2020, for the city of Dublin.
Easton, congratulations, and that's, that's a job well done. We appreciate what you're doing for our citizens, and appreciate the good job you do. This is where I'm supposed to shake your hand, but we're just going to talk about that.
City of Dublin is pleased to announce that Mr. Jonathan W. Cottico is employee of the year for the city of Dublin. Captain Cottico, again, his tenure with the city of Dublin on March 2nd, 1979, when he was hired as a firefighter. He's been an invaluable member of the success of the Dublin Fire Department for over 41 years. Captain Cottico is currently a Georgia certified firefighter level three, and nationally cert, is nationally certified in hazardous materials awareness and operation. He has participated in extensive training sessions over the years to better serve the public, and gained knowledge for advancements within the department. Ain't no telling how many trainings Cottico has been too. I imagine that's thousands, thousands. On December 12th, 2008, Jonathan was promoted to fire lieutenant, and on August 16th, 2012, he was promoted to fire captain, where he currently serves on seashore for 24 hours on, for 48 hours off. During his tenure, he has served under three different fire chiefs, and has seen the department go through many changes. One of his passions has to do with grilling and smoking of meat. And he has used his talent for several different companies, for interviews, and organizations such as NDA Golf Club since its inception, and was instrumental in building the Dublin Fire Department cook team, participates in digging the park. Captain Cottico never looks for athletes. His goal is to help people and build our team, solid things. Aside from work, Jonathan's married Rosemary Cottico, and they have three beautiful daughters. They're faithful members of Best Saint Baptist Church. Jonathan's also built a successful business in Cottico Tennis Company. Captain Cottico is an example of what the Dublin Fire Department stands for, faith, family, and community, and what you can accomplish within the city of Dublin. He always comes to work with a smile on his face, encourages his coworkers in relation to work and their personal life. Congratulations again, Mr. Cottico, for being employee of the year.
You've been with three chiefs, which one do you like the most? I'm joking, I don't like that one. On behalf of the Dublin City Council, if you sit here, we'd like to present you with this plaque, and this is an amazing award to be employed a year out of 250 some odd people. So that means you appear to think a lot of you, and that's, that's the biggest honor you can get. So here you go. There's a check in the back, and as I told the other gentleman, I think he's supposed to give you a day off, but I don't know. That might be hard to do to get a check, Jack. Congratulations. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. That's a great way to start a meeting.
It's nothing personal, it's just business.
Hello?
That's how some people do things.
Right away.
To us, everything we do is personal. Because anyone can answer the call. It's who shows up that matters most. That's the quality of your independent agent. And the company that stands behind them. Ask Currie Maffet Insurance in Dublin if auto owners make sense for you.
We'll get into our regular agenda items now, and the first item on the agenda is approval of the November 19th meeting minutes. I see a motion by hand. I got a motion by Mr. Davis and a second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand, aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, approval of bills over $5,000. I see a motion to approve the bills. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is the first reading of an ordinance to amend section 2-206 of the Code of Ordinances related to municipal court prosecutions. And Mr. Jones, would you like to read that, please?
This ordinance number 20-23, an ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to amend section 2-206, Article 8, Municipal Court Prosecutor, Chapter 2, no exception of the code of ordinances for the city of Dublin, provide for the employment of attorneys to serve as municipal court prosecutor for the city of Dublin, in the event of an absence or conflict for the municipal court prosecutor, provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
Okay, our second reading and public hearing of this proposed ordinance amendment will be at our January 7th meeting. Okay, item number five is discussion and/or action on emergency declaration due to COVID-19 and emergency ordinance mandating the use of face masks.
All right, this is emergency declaration ordinance number 20-24, a declaration of state emergency continuing because of COVID-19. An emergency ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin, taking immediate effect upon the use of masks for face covering to the public during COVID-19 outbreak, set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. And this one will last for, again, 45 days.
Okay, Mr. Powell, do we have to have a public hearing on that, or is there something we can take action on?
Yes, sir. We have the public hearing at the hall.
Okay. We will now close the city council meeting, and open the public hearing, and ask if there's any way, anyone here that'd like to speak in opposition or in favor of this ordinance. And we also need to monitor our Facebook Live on this too, to make sure that no comments are there. Okay, is there anyone that'd like to speak in opposition to this proposed ordinance change? If not, we will now close the public hearing, reopen the city council meeting, and turn it over to council for action. And by a show of hands, do I see a motion to approve this? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number seven is discussion and/or action on funds for the Dublin Lawrence County Recreation Authority to rehabilitate the outdoor basketball court at River View Park. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Brown, I have item six on animal control, is that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped you, that's my bad. Let me back up. Item six, discussion and/or action on a resolution appointing an animal control hearing officer.
All right, thank you. This is required that we do this in our intergovernmental agreement with Mrs. Kim, to provide, they provide animal control. This is resolution number 20-32, resolution with the city of Dublin, Georgia, by the Mayor and Council, to designate dog control officer and animal control officers, to designate hearing officer, authority for the purpose of hearing in a criminal or civil cases concerning animal control ordinances, to designate now a municipal court judge, protein, for the only first purpose of hearing animal control ordinance cases, to set an effective date and term of appointment, excuse me, for other lawful purposes.
Okay, that is it, you threw it at Lance. Okay, all right, you've heard the, you've heard the staff recommendation, is there a motion to approve? Got a motion by Mr. Griggs and a second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, item number seven is discussion and/or action on funds for the Dublin Lawrence County Recreation Authority to rehabilitate the outdoor basketball court at River View Park.
Okay, the recreation authority had responsibility for handling our parks. When the authority was set up, that was all part of the negotiation, providing Dublin and the county recreation departments. And the outdoor basketball court at River View Park is a bad need of renovation. The recreation authorities, the handling, the city agreed to, were asking the city to agree, put in some extra money to make sure it's up to the quality we'd like to have. Currently, the total amount of the deals to do, the initial work, is $10,300 that we need to give to DSCRA to carry out this work, and I've been consulting with Councilman Dee Jones, also other needed improvements. And so I would like, or ask for council, I know you probably made it this discussion on this, for authority to spend, Councilman Jones was up, an additional $6,000, is that correct?
Yes, I think what we do, we'll stay as a mind, we're pretty much on the fence, and we're not going to go on the fence all the way in. But just make sure we get the right road, make sure the thing is done properly. I would say not another $6,000, because around $20,000, we'll be way under $20,000, probably, if you have to. Got to make sure we cover everything that we have, that we need, to make the little profit, or make the little business.
And I will, if council approved the spending of $10,300 proposed, you have the quotes that the recreation authority got on those, and then authorize DSC to spend up to $6,000 in addition, to make sure it's done right, that we get a good quality product. And I will report to council as scheme, and I just come in and give you that $6,000 spend, so y'all, so y'all have a chance to time this call.
Okay, council, do I hear a motion? Any questions? Yes, sir. Motion to approve. Bill Brown, second, and Danny Jones, in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Or raise your hand, I'm sorry. All opposed? Carries unanimously.
Hi, I'm Don Corzal. Come into Dublin Nissan this month and buy a new Nissan and pay zero interest for up to seven years. And don't forget our second annual 12 Days of Christmas. Wishing you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year from Dublin Nissan.
It's really hot outside, and the deals are even hotter with the City of Dublin Natural Gas. How would you like a free 40-gallon hot water heater, plus free gas installation? It's easy, just pick up the phone and call Brad Grimes with the City of Dublin Natural Gas, 277-5048, and get a free hot water heater and free installation. The City of Dublin Natural Gas, saving you money every single day.
Item number eight is discussion or action to fund the Dublin Lawrence County Recreation Authority to rehabilitate the tennis courts at Hillbrook Park as pickleball courts. Mr. Jones?
Similar situation, the recreation authority has asked for this, and so they've taken our parks for us. Those permits and quotes are, are needed materials. The total cost for renovation will be about $26,800. There have been some people who would like to contribute, but I believe it's council's overall feeling that it would be better for the city to do it, to, and perhaps if those folks have something else they'd like to do with that money with the recreation authority, they discussed that with the recreation authority, and also discussed this with the head of the recreation authority, Mr. Brown, and he agreed. So that way, if the city doesn't need to do anything with these parks otherwise, we'll be approved of this. So what I ask is if the council approved the spending of $26,800 to rehabilitate those courts, do you think?
Okay, council, do I hear any questions or motion to approve? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Or raise your hand, those opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Okay, item number nine is a discussion and/or action on a resolution to accept an award of $2.62 million from the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Agency for the South Industrial Park Sanitary Sewer Improvements and Extinctions. Mr. Jones?
And this is an incredible opportunity for the city of Dublin. We've been awarded, as Mayor said, $2.62 million to help us rehabilitate the sewer line. Like I said, internally, we call it Black Cat Cave Sewer Line, it runs by I N Y K K. Best guy, D N X, Westfield, I N Y K K, are all connected to the sewer line, and it is at capacity right now. It is, it is, there's not room for growth in it really. And it is also a whole clay section line, which means that when it rains, we get our tree, tons of rainwater coming through to our, our tree plant. So as part of our program to recompensate these lines and get that I and I out of our system, and also to expand this, it'll be a larger line to run up to the 257 industrial site. So when an industrial prospect comes in and says, how long will it take you to run utilities? We can say, well, the utilities are there, will take us no time, they are on site. So it'd be a tremendous opportunity to increase growth of the industry in Dublin. Right now, the folks connected this line, created about $800 jobs, so it's very important for us. It's also important to get these lines out, because they increase our plant capacity. I mean, the more I and I we get out, it puts off for several years us having to build a new plant. As part of this, this is a four, over probably close to a four and a half million dollar project total. We are applying to JIPA, which is the branch of the state authority that owns money for this type project, for interest free loan for up to 30 years, to provide the rest of the money. So it's a, it's fantastic time to be doing this. And so staff would recommend that the council approves accepting this grant of $2.62 million. If the JIPA office is not approved, we can still turn down this grant. We do not anticipate that happening, we think it's going to be good.
Okay, any questions from council? If not, do I see a motion to approve? Got a motion, second? Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand, by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number 10 is discussion and/or action on declaration of surplus.
All right, we've got several items, and there are pictures and descriptions, a little bit of description on these, picture packets. We have unit 701, a 1999 Ford F-150, 704, a 95 Ford Ranger pickup, unit 319, a Ford D-30 pickup, that's an old military surplus truck, that's 1986 model. Unit 408, a 2007 Peterbilt garbage truck. Unit 175, a 2005 Chevy Trailblazer, using 709, another 2005 Chevy Trailblazer. Two sets of old tag readers that we had on the heat cars that are not working now. And then miscellaneous parts and tires that we sort of accumulated over the years, and that memory of things we've already surplus for surplus now, so we just need to clear those out of our warehouse.
Okay, staff?
All these will be sold along the way.
Okay. Do I hear motion to approve surplus? Do I see a motion? Got a motion, you got several motions, got any seconds? Got a second? Any discussion?
Will you name her like who it was over there? Who are you saying?
Jerry Davis and Gerald Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Just backing up one second, Mr. Jones, we've got a viewer that's asking to tell them what I and I is. If you could give that quick explanation, not long.
I'll try. I and I, this stands for inflow and infiltration, and it's, it's where the groundwater is running in through our sewer line. It's bad because as that water, just clean groundwater comes in, we have to treat it just like we do any other sewer. So it lowers the actual capacity of our tree plant, because we're just treated above the rain.
Okay, thank you, sir. Hope that answered your question. If not, Mr. Sheffield will talk to you later about it. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we've got citizens' comments, for any citizens that'd like to make a comment. Right now, we've got Peyton and Ron Deal and Michael Clay and Chief Cuthbert back there. So I don't think we've got any citizens' comments. We will say though, that we will be reviewing these comments that we have on Facebook Live, and someone from staff will be getting back to you very soon about that.
Hey, I'm Glenn Redster with Hometown Supply. Hometown Supply located in downtown Dublin is here for all of your home and hardware needs. We are committed to providing you with quality products and service on our full line of new and used appliance. We also offer service on most, any brand of appliance on the market today. So if you need repairs on appliance, just give us a call here at Hometown Supply. Local delivery is available for merchandise sold. Anything that a customer needs, we take care of. Just remember, if you can't do business at Hometown Supply, you just can't do business.
All right, that brings us to council comments, and Mr. Smith, we'll start with the, oh, excuse me, go ahead Lance.
Mr. Dick, before we move into council comments, there's one matter that's come up. I know Councilor Brown was at a meeting of the downtown development authority, and Councilor Brown, do you want to maybe move to add that to the agenda at this point, so we can discuss it?
Uh, City of, Mr. Jones, if you think it needs to be addressed by the council, then so be it. And I think that, you know, in our conversation yesterday, I was just looking to get feedback from you, based on a conversation you may have had with the DDA, and just letting us know what their plans were, basically after. Basically, uh, after my conversation with them yesterday, you know, their intent for, for the, uh, for Shamrock Rock was certainly pretty limited in scope. Uh, we'll say that the, that the DDA made a motion, and it was, it carried fully to, to coincide with whatever you and the city council decided to do as far as Shamrock Rock goes, so I think previous, uh, you know, mind that, that the unit council was to not have the Shamrock Rock, and, uh, and, you know, based on the, on the cases and so forth, I, I feel that's probably still the case. Uh, but just wanted to be the last word on what they, what their plan was, and, uh, yeah, if decisions changed and so be it, I don't, I don't foresee that.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Brown. While doing, uh, council, uh, for you is, is proposing an email, I get out, getting that out to you, uh, right away, and just sort of where the cases are and what their plans are, and y'all can let me know if you're pleased.
Okay, any other discussion? Alright, Mr. Smith, we'll start with you. Mr. Chris Smith?
Okay, I got you.
Got it.
Uh, just want to congratulate the boys up here, also congratulate, uh, Dr. Williams with, uh, Hillburn High School, and I want to encourage everyone to stay safe, COVID case or virus, so the kids stay safe. And I also want to let everyone know we're giving out, uh, Christmas dinners on Christmas Eve at Jefferson Park, so if you know anyone that's in need of a Christmas dinner, come out to Jefferson Park on Christmas Eve at three P M.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Griggs?
Thanks, Mr. Brown. Um, I also would like to, uh, congratulate, uh, Dr. Williams and the, and the school system, um, and Mr. Powell for the head of quarter, employee of the quarter, and Capico, uh, for, uh, employee of the year. Um, also would like to make sure that everybody continues to stay safe. Um, it's, it's amazing that it's continuing to grow like it is, but, uh, we need to continue to fight the orthocapacetic system. Um, that's all I've got, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, sir. Okay, uh, Mr. Gerald Smith?
Okay, oh, well, I'd just like to thank everybody who watched the meeting, are thankful that we can do these meetings virtually, because, uh, open back up opportunities for the public to see what's going on. We have a lot of things going on, uh, so I do want to congratulate the employees of the quarter and the employee of the year. Uh, we forget just how hard these city employees work, for us, and, uh, they are all of these committed, but especially these who have, uh, just been exemplary in their task, and, uh, they're a great example for us to follow. And it's the citizens who benefit from all these great employees, but let's not forget them, especially at Christmas time. Uh, also, um, I want to just say, uh, thank Dr. Kraft and his staff, for all they're doing there, they always get through this virus stuff. Folks, uh, I know everybody's weary and tired, but this is something serious, uh, I personally have lost a number of friends, uh, loved ones, and I'm sure there are many, many, there's probably nobody who has not been touched by the disease. So hopefully we've got a, a vaccine now, we're going to be able to get it under control, but still be wise, be vigilant. And, uh, also the last thing I'll leave you with is, uh, we thank you, citizens, for all you do to make up a great place. And we ask that you have a wonderful new year coming up, and a, a very merry Christmas, and just remember Jesus is the reason. Let's see. Bless you all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Echo, we want to say about, uh, everyone that wants to say about, uh, employee of the quarter, employee of the year, congratulations, Echo, and Mr. Williams just said, uh, how, uh, 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 citizens, uh, uh, and what you do work for the city of Dublin, and for citizens of Dublin, thank you. And also, let's not get, because I know that, just to say we got a vaccine, but let's not get too, too, too overly jealous right now. That's your number disease still out here, I'm impressed, in fact, by two coworkers, one, they want to make a number of shots, they're, they're, they're cosigning out, they're, they're keeping them in the practice, they're, uh, throwing out the COVID-19 gene, that's first again, they're, but let's be real about this thing, it, it's something that's really hard. But let's, let's make this thing serious, mess up, I know everyone want to go back to life, but don't hide it from us. Hey, but see, some cases yesterday, you got to think about the pain that we're going over holidays, it's a great work, great work, you know, going each day just to say we need to keep tradition alive while we got these cases going up like this. Um, and this is Thanksgiving surgery, this is our Christmas, a new deal surgery, got to be merry, so. Let's be nice, and let's thank a lot of other folks who out there who did, and, and mess up, and also, uh, let's share a merry Christmas, remember the, the season of Jesus Christ, let's share a happy new year, and, uh, complete and secure, you know, the festival holiday.
Thank you, sir.
At Lake's Alignment, we would like to take this time to thank our community for your support over the last sixty-six years, and especially these last few months with the opening of our brand new Truck Center. When you drive into Lake's Alignment, you get master-trained technicians like Anthony Penny, everybody calls him Bug, but it means so much to us, and on behalf of Neil Harden, Lisa, our staff, and the entire Lake family, we thank you for supporting us since nineteen fifty-four. Come see us today. We open every morning at eight o'clock, and now our Truck Center is open on Saturday to serve your big trucks and equipment from eight until twelve. At Lake's Alignment, we thank you and this entire community, and will continue to serve you with the best-trained staff and friendly courteous service. Lake's Alignment, hometown people serving hometown people. Come see us today, one oh four Johnson Street, East Dublin.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you know, like I said, uh, I'd say one of that, uh, was on the board, uh, regarding the employees of quarter, employee of the year, also want to continue to encourage everybody to, 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 to create safety for yourself, the family, and others around you, uh, without telling everybody who's suffering COVID-19 disease. Also want to, uh, as I said, uh, it's Christmas season, so we all need to remember why, uh, why it's, why it's Christmas season. Remember, uh, keep practicing that. Uh, everybody be safe over the holidays, there'll be a lot of, uh, folks around town and stuff like that, so just be mindful, and, uh, make everybody to...
Thank you, sir. Mr. Davis?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank everybody, uh, for tuning in, uh, this morning. Also want to commend, uh, Dr. Williams and the Dublin City School System, want to commend, uh, Mr. Powell of the Gas Department for being the employee of the quarter, and also Mr. Jonathan Colico, uh, for being the employee of the year. Do want to echo, uh, what the other council members have said, uh, particularly about the COVID virus. Uh, I'm happy to hear about a, a vaccine that's currently being distributed, and also one that might be, uh, given, uh, very, very soon. But in, uh, even with that, we do need to continue to wear our mask, uh, wherever it just live. We need to make sure we don't be in large gatherings, and even with them and them, you need to try to limit that and do the social distancing thing, uh, also with them to try to stay safe. And we want to make sure we sanitize and wash our hands often, because, uh, we, we've lost too many people already, and we don't want to lose that more. Want to, uh, just, uh, thank all of our employees for the great job that they've done this year, and want to thank the, uh, our citizens and wish them, wish everyone, uh, a merry Christmas and a prosperous new year. And also, I just wanted to, uh, say what the others have said, remember that Jesus Christ is the reason of the cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Uh, Mr. Powell?
I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of council for your support of, uh, the city employees and all the people for us, animal, everybody have a, a Christmas, and hopefully a much better new year.
Mr. Davis?
Good afternoon.
Mr. James?
Uh, just Merry Christmas in twenty twenty-one, coming, twenty twenty-three, I'm going to say it. Just keep moving.
Okay, thank, I want to thank council and the citizens for bearing with us on this virtual, we had, we have, uh, they'll remain nameless, but we had two employees that would be involved in this meeting that would have had to done it virtually anyway, either due to symptoms or, or, uh, contact and being, uh, quarantined. So it hits everybody, it hits everybody. Let's please be careful and, and watch what we're doing and, and do the best we can to protect ourselves. Uh, and other than that, just, everybody said it, Merry Christmas. We, we want to have a good Christmas, we want everybody to have a safe Christmas, and we love y'all, and ain't nothing you can do about it. With that, the meeting is there.
When it comes to handheld power tools, there's no better name than Echo. From our consumer-grade to professional blowers, we've got what you're looking for. We have hedge trimmers, string trimmers, and pole pruners to cut any job down to size. And Echo's battery-powered equipment gives you gas-like performance without the hassle. So come see us at Myers Equipment and Supply, three oh one North Jefferson in Dublin.